All right, everybody. Good evening. Let's see. So here we are at the Newbury Town Hall. It's his only board of appeals. It's Thursday, April 17th, 2024. It's 7:30. We have Chrissy O'Pree, who is our excellent administrative assistant. I'm Eric Spahn, Chair of the GBA. Mario Conaboli, who's a member. Michelle Eeler, who is an associate member. And we have Jack Kelly, who is a member. So with that, tonight, we will open the meeting and we will begin the first public hearings.
The applicant is requesting a special -- to Northern Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a special permit finding for the relief of Section 97-4D4A, changing the use from commercial slash residential to two-family residential. 97-D5C01, increase in footprint. And 97-4D5C02, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project to renovate existing structure on the property, constructing a two-family residential dwelling on pilings on the property located at 2 Northern Boulevard, Palm Island, Newbury, Mass., Assessor Matt, U02, Lot 26. And this is a continuing public hearing from September 19th, 2024, meeting due to a nonquorum. Applicant has submitted a withdrawal of the application with no prejudice.
So with that, is there -- there's no discussion, but is there a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Motion to withdraw is accepted. Okay. Please do the next one.
Susan and Thomas Costigan, 337th Street. The applicants are requesting a special permit finding for the relief of Section 97-4D5C01, increase in footprint and the Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project for renovations to the existing dwelling, including decks on the property located at 337th Street, Palm Island, Newbury, Mass., 1951, Assessor's Matt, U4, Lot 165, continued from September 19th.
Mr. -- is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Douglas Duchesne from Finner and Nicholson, representing the Costigans. I have to apologize, I did a PowerPoint presentation, which I've given you a copy, but I can't seem to get -- we can't seem to log into that computer to allow it to be shown. So I will do the best I can to explain things without big pictures and a laser pointer.
But you always bring an excellent paper copy.
Well, I just figured in case. But I didn't bring this time or lodge.
So is there anybody here that has interest in the hearing on 337th Street? Okay. If for some reason you find yourself having an interest, then there are hard copies to look at. Somebody is interested. So please don't be shy. Mr. Duchesne is talking and we'd like to see something.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to run through my introduction. I went through this thing. So again, the owner of the property is 337 Palm Island LLC, Thomas and Sue, the Costigan are the managers. I represent them from Finner and Nicholson. Tim Meehan is our -- from OX Survey, is the professional licensed surveyor. And Scott Brown from Scott &amp; Brown Architects is the architect. The project summary, the clients are seeking to construct a multi-story addition and a deck to their existing home. They're also going to change some windows and, as you're seeing from the plans, they're kind of, you know, changing the look all around. But in terms of additions and increase in the size of the project, the proposed construction will not add any new conformities, but will be changing the footpin of the structure. So as you know, if it's over 500 square feet of additional foundation, then I need a special permit. And we're at about 812 feet. So that's one reason we're here for the special permit finding. Also, we are, I guess I didn't use the right word. We have an existing front setback which is nonconforming, and we want to go upward extension of that portion of the building. So while we're not moving any closer, Mr. Burnett did determine that we were making an upward extension of a pre-existing nonconformity. So again, that triggered the need to be here. But we are not proposing any changes to the height of the proposed structure. And as I said, we're not creating any new nonconformities. The existing conditions, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming at 23,880 square feet. So although it doesn't meet 40, it's one of the bigger lots I've worked on out on the island. We do have conforming frontage of over 264 feet, and we're not proposing any changes to the lot or the frontage. Again, the only pre-existing nonconformance of the home is the 2.8 feet front setback where 10 feet is required. The proposed structure, as I know I've said, there are no changes proposed to the existing nonconforming lot, not creating any new conformities. The new structure will however result in an increased footprint and extension of the pre-existing front yard nonconformance. The new structure will meet all other directional dimensional requirements, including setback, the, you know, the other four setbacks, lot coverage, FAR, and height, although we're not changing the height. The next picture, just give you a picture of the property. It's the red dot. As you can see, it is beachfront property. It's located off of 37th Street, which, you know, is a direct connection to Northern And again, then I showed you a picture of the assessor's map. So again, you can get a good, you can get a good understanding of the lot. What I'd like to point out to you is that the lot directly across the street at Cert. 37th Street, it's U04-0-169. That is the property that is directly across from our frontage. My clients own that property as well. So where we are expanding an upward extension of that nonconforming setback, we have no concerns that that in any way is going to encroach on anyone else. And my clients certainly don't have an issue. With respect to the other surrounding properties, we have maintained all the required setbacks. So we're hoping that that won't have a detrimental effect on our two other abutting neighbors. Just to give you some pictures of the home, and I know Mr. Brown gave you four views, and some of these may be similar, but this is the, actually, the side of the house. It would be the western side of the house and off to the right where you see that little small roof and whatnot. That's actually the front of the house. And here, the next picture gives you a better view of that. You can see where the front of the house fronts on 37th Street, which is not the greatest road in the world, but it is a sufficient dirt-based road to allow my clients to get in and out. And of course, they park on the side of the house, so no need to park anywhere near the street. The next picture is actually the left side of the house, which would be the north side of the house. And I do want to point out that we have an existing deck and stairway on that side, and that is one of the locations where my client -- that is the location where my clients are actually proposing to put a foundation under that deck and then do a two-story addition. And then lastly, is the easterly view of the house, which is the edge that faces the ocean. And again, to the left, you can see 37th Street there. Just to give you an idea of the surrounding homes, this is the home that faces the west side of the house. This house fronts on Northern Boulevard. So you can see, we've got quite a bit of room between us and that property. And in fact, we have 24, 24 and a half feet on that side, and we're not proposing to change it. Then, the next picture is sort of looking at that house and now scanning, panning to the, to the right. You can see that house through the trees. It too fronts on Northern Boulevard. Not really, it doesn't really have a whole lot of, you know, view to our house or, you know, what we're doing is not going to impact them. The addition we're talking about is going to be blocked by these trees. And as you can see, as I continue to swing around, this is the neighbor directly to our west. And, you know, there's a pretty good buffered buffer there. And again, we're not proposing to move the structure any closer to them than it is now. And it's, you know, I think, you know, 25 feet where 20, or 24 and a half feet where 10 feet is required. The next picture is now coming around the house, and you can see the first corner of the deck and the side that faces the ocean. And now I'm coming around that left side of the house. And again, there's the first picture I showed you, the house that abuts on our side yard and is on Northern Boulevard. Now, these, this next series of pictures actually gives you an understanding. You can see 37th Street with that red car parked there. To the left, that is the lot that my clients own, that abuts, you know, is directly across the street from the house we're talking about improving. There's an old garage and a shack on that property. So there's currently no residential structures there. And here is a picture of that garage, and you can see that our next neighbors to the, to the south are pretty set, set pretty far back. And, you know, the white one's pretty tall, as is the one next to us. I think they're both taller than us. But again, I just wanted to show you what the surrounding neighborhood was and who's going to be seeing this. And then this is a picture of the shed that's on that same side. So really don't believe, and then, again, sorry, another picture of the shed and again, a better view of the -- this is really the house that is directly across line of sight to this house. You know, once you skip over the undeveloped lot, that's our closest neighbor to the left, and they're pretty far away and pretty tall, taller than us. I apologize, I don't have the screen because, as we know, these plans are difficult to see, but I hope you guys have the, at least a logical copy. This site plan, which was done by OX Survey, I just want to, for a minute, just look at the zoning matrix to give you an understanding of the impacts of this development. The height, we're not providing, proposing to change the height of the roof. The height, the mean height right now is 29.5 feet. The lot coverage will go from 7.87% to 9.23%, still vastly below the 20% allowed. No change to the front setback, other than the fact that we're extending it vertically. No change to the side yard setback that we discussed that was 25 feet. And the side B setback, which is actually our setback to the beach, is 190 feet, where 10 feet is required. And then last, the rear setback, which is to the north, we're at 20 feet, and we're going to go down to 16, but we are only required to be at 10. So again, you know, with the exception, exception of the extension of the front setback, we're well meeting all requirements. And then lastly, the FAR, which is currently at 12.3%, is going to go up to 15.7%, again, well below the 25. And the reason for that increase is that the area where I mentioned we're going to put a foundation and build up two stories, that's going to end up, and that and a little addition on the other side is going to add an additional 812 square feet of living space. So that's where we get the increase in FAR. If you have this plan, and again, I apologize that we don't have a screen, but this is a proposed site plan, AO.O. or 0.0. And as you can see, Scott has prepared for us an understanding of, you know, these various additions and changes. So let's start with the right front corner, which is actually the side facing the street. This is where we are proposing to vertically extend. And what, the way we're doing that, and again, I guess the best, the best view of this would be the, the proposed self-elevation plan, which is A3. If you look at the top, you can see that the existing, to the right of the building where that person is standing, we currently have a deck. And as you can see, from the proposed elevation on the bottom, we want to add that, it says "new addition in existing deck footprint." So it's this, you know, they want to add this little piece here, okay? And then they're going to reconfigure this deck here. So that's, that's, that's that little piece of it. And that is the piece that's adding some livable square footage. Now, if we could now sort of come around over here where it says "new stair entry to second floor," and again, I think the southern, southern plan will help to show that. You can see in the existing southern elevation, there's a stairway over there, and there's a two-story deck, actually, two decks. What, what my client's proposing to do is to put a foundation under a portion of that deck, as we showed, you know, here. This is the portion they, they actually want to put a foundation there and then go up two stories. So you can see from the southern elevation that this is what we've got today, and what we'll have when we're done is a stairway here and then a deck, and then on the backside, there'll be two stories of living space. And then, as I mentioned before, they are changing out most, if not all, of the windows and doors. You can, you can see from any of the proposed elevations, they, for the most part, are keeping them in the same place, in some instances, adding some extra windows. I mean, you can never have too much light. So those are more aesthetic changes. And then, if you take a quick look at the proposed east elevation, which is the side facing the neighbor, where they park, right off, the parking is here. You can see that they've, what they've done here is to reconfigure the deck to the right. Right now, you come down the stairs to the parking area. They want to eliminate that, widen that deck a little, and, and put a second-story deck above it. And again, I think that results in a very minor change to the setback, but it's still well within the, you know, the requirement that's at setback with, with the neighbors that have all the trees. So we're at 24 feet, I believe, there, in any event, so, or 16, but well over the 10. So it really is quite a few little deck here, a little addition here, go up second here, put a little addition. But as I said, at the end of the day, they're only talking about adding about 800 square feet of livable space, and they're still going to be right around 15% on their FAR and under 10 for their lot coverage. So if I can jump back to the presentation here, I, you know, I've given you as good an understanding as I can about the proposed work, and certainly will be able to answer the questions you have. But I guess I'd just like to jump to the, the end of the presentation and, and explain Why does my presentation not have a last page? Does yours, do your presentations have a, a couple of pages at the end with written? Yes, great. Glad you have them. Now, Chrissy, I'm going to borrow, I'm going to borrow.
There's one right there on the list.
There's one right there. That's amazing. I pulled it from random, and I pulled the one that didn't have this. All righty. So with respect to our justification for the special permit, the addition of what I would consider a modest amount of living space and new outdoor decks to the existing dwelling will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and may in fact provide some benefits to the neighborhood. The construction will result, as I said, in a modest extension of that pre-existing front setback. However, it's a setback to my client's property, so they're comfortable with it. And as you saw from those pictures, the houses behind that of the lot, the white one and the brown one, they're huge structures and they're, you know, they're literally 100 feet away. So while they'll see the changes and hopefully find them attractive, it's not going to have any impact on their views, their light, their, their anything. They're just too far away. The resulting structure creates no new conformities and will meet all other dimensional requirements. So even with the addition of the foundation, the addition of the little second story add-on, and then the two-story add-on, and then all this deck reconfiguration, we meet all of your dimensional requirements. So I think the improved aesthetics of the property will certainly increase the property value of that, our property and surrounding properties. It'll be an increase in tax revenue for the town. But at the end of the day, I really think this is just all, you know, pretty much an aesthetic exercise. Make the house more livable, give them some more outdoor space, and sort of fill in some, some living spaces too, just to update the home. The last page then, guys. Again, my client is proposing a minor increase here in living space plus these additional outdoor deck areas. Can be constructed to meet all dimensional requirements except the front setback, which is being extended, which however will impact none of our neighbors at all. We have had discussions, my clients have discussed this project with their neighbors, and, you know, the neighbors are supportive that, you know, it's going to, going to update it, make it look nice, and not impinge or interfere with any of their properties. Again, not creating any new height or massing or scaling that is going to have any impact on the neighbors. So that is our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I do need to say, this has been a heck of a, a meeting for me. I, you know, I've had two cases withdrawn, and I got a call this morning from my client who said that they've been working with Mr. Hughes to do the conservation work and the conservation plans, and they may have to modify one of the decks a little. So I don't have that modification. Obviously, I didn't provide it to you. And I, again, I'm just getting it myself. So rather than continue or, you know, try and say, hey, could you consider this? I thought it would be best to come in, explain the project, try and answer any questions you might have, and then respectfully ask that you continue us to give me an opportunity to get those, that minor modification to the deck into you well in advance of the next meeting. But I will tell you, from what I've been told by Mr. Brown, it is not, it's only deck changes, no living space, no roofs, nothing. It's just the shape of the decks are being modified a little. But again, I wasn't about to continue this meeting after, you know, two, two withdrawals and, you know, the last minute. I really thought it would be best to come in here, see what questions and concerns you have with what's here today, and knowing that I'll get you a, a plan with some minor modifications on the decks. With that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments? I got a few. I just have a, it might even be a typo. On the lot coverage checklist?
Yeah.
I just can't read square footage of the proposed footprint. Is it 1152?
Well, I'm sorry, let me see if I can read it. And it's on the checklist, the application checklist?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have that. Can I just take a quick look and maybe?
Are you on FAR?
Oh.
It's handwritten.
It's handwritten, yeah. It might be, I just couldn't make the numbers out.
Yeah, primary dwelling is 1022, proposed dwelling.
Those are my notes, they're trying to decipher.
857 in decks, we're adding 200 feet of decks. So the overall existing footage is 1879, right? So that verifies that this is 1022, because when I add those up, I get 1879.
Right, and what about this one?
Well, this I can read, right? 2204. And we know that the decks are now going to be 1052. That's 2, 5, 1, 1. So yes, this is 115.
Very good. That's what I thought it was, just wanted to make sure.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you very much. And again, you know, it's a pretty good-sized lot at 23,000, so our coverage and our FAR is staying pretty low.
So this, this is an existing four-bedroom home?
Yes.
And it's going to stay a four-bedroom home?
I believe so, yeah.
None of the additions add any bedrooms?
No, no.
Okay.
In fact, sure, Mr.?
Well, I was looking at that actually, too. Actually, it looks like there's one less bedroom. There's three bedrooms upstairs and a sitting room on the new plan.
Yeah.
There's three bedrooms upstairs, but there's one bedroom on the proposed ground lot. There's no bedrooms on the first floor. It's really new, and the orange in the left is the existing.
Well, this is the existing, right?
All right, I'm just getting my footprints. Existing ground floor.
Yeah, so then there's a fourth bedroom downstairs.
Yeah, there's, there's on detail four, if I'm drawing wrong.
Yeah, there's, well, there's another kitchen down there on the ground floor, sorry. That's what you were thinking, were you thinking?
Didn't it say it was a two-family?
It, it shows two kitchens. They're called out.
It says it's a two-family. Am I confusing?
Yeah, I thought I said it was a two-family.
I'm sorry. I, I know I provided the assessor's card.
So it's kind of where it's going, and that's kind of what it looked like.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just making sure we weren't.
There's one disadvantage of not having my architect with me.
Where's, where's the card?
Yeah, it's four bedrooms again, four bedrooms with that sitting room. That would make a nice bedroom, too.
Well, let me look at that proposed.
Conforming two-family home, nonconforming two-family home, nonconforming lot.
Pre-existing nonconforming use.
Or is it just a, a?
Kitchen, dining, living area, storage.
Two yards, okay.
Bathroom.
Four bedrooms, four bedrooms and two baths.
Yeah, but I, I do agree with your comment about the sitting room, but I don't believe I see, is it actually doored off?
It's not.
No, it's not.
It's just extending it, but there's, the two additions don't add, they add to the living room and they add to the sitting room. Okay, so that's question one. So the, these two large decks that are being added, that one deck is covering the other deck.
Yep.
And, and you said that there was a paved surface under the deck or a?
No, I, I don't believe there is.
Okay.
I know. And again, as you can see from the existing east elevation, there was a deck there to their first floor deck. They just, they don't want to expand it out and.
Is the space under, under the deck, which is covered by the? Is, is the space under, under the deck, which is covered by the second floor deck, counted in the FAR? If the deck is covering the other deck and the, and the deck up above is waterproof and not letting water through, then it, it should be counted as covered on the space.
What if it's flow-through, what if there's, you know, spaces?
It's kind of a reusable deck to be on, but...
Yeah, no, good point, no, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
You're up against the FAR.
No.
So, looking at it.
We'll verify that.
What the construction is and if it is, just include it, so it's, it's in there for you.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm very confident, you know, Mr. Brown does an excellent job of understanding what FAR is, which is why I have him do those, but I will follow.
Is this, the side entry with the steps that has a roof over it counted as FAR?
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, which one was that, the front?
The, uh, north, south. The south side, the southeast corner addition is on posts, it extends the first floor plan, it does not extend the second floor plan, but there is a roof over it, so is that counted as FAR?
Okay.
Because it has a roof over it.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, I just wanna make sure I get this correct, so we're talking about the south side?
We're talking the southeast.
The section where that green, where they're gonna put a new habitable space at second floor level over existing deck location, under that is?
It's the entry piece, the stair goes up.
Yeah.
And you have a new entry landing and it has a roof over it.
All right.
So you've got a deck, this deck has a roof. And, and, you know, just real simple, anything that's covered.
Yeah.
Is counted. Are there any, are there any eaves that are over 22 inches, doesn't look like that?
I do not believe so, because I know, I have talked with Mr. Brown about that in the past and again, he's always pretty good at, um...
Okay.
And in fact, as you can see on the proposed east elevation, they are proposing this rooflet.
Yeah.
I don't think they're over 10 inches, but I will check.
All right.
I think that's just to allow for those, you know, those windows, the storm windows that roll up.
All right, I'm changing height. Is the, is there anything else on the application that's not in line, anybody found? I noticed on one of these applications, somebody put the existing and the new, or the, they put the same number in two locations, they put the lot size and the total lot coverage as the same square footage number, it's just a typo, it's not this application. Are there any other? Questions, comments? Yeah?
Oh, just, I don't know.
So you, you're going to?
I'm gonna go back, get the answers to these questions, we'll be submitting next, this week or first to next week, a new set of drawings that will show a minor, as I'm told, minor change to the shape of the decks only, and then that way we can come back and explain that change and also make sure that our FAR calculations are fulfilled.
And FAR, right, and if anything else changes, please call it out.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah, yeah, I mean, again, depending on whether they're changing the shape, making it smaller, that may reduce our lot coverage, if it's a little bigger, lot coverage will up a little, but, oh, in fact, Scott, it, it is a minor change, Scott said that our lot coverage was gonna go from approximately, it's 9.23 as now proposed, and he said it was gonna go up to like 9.4 or 5, so it's a minor, but still gonna be below 10% lot coverage. But, thank you, I appreciate your time and I'm sorry about this last minute change, but...
We certainly like to get exactly what we're gonna vote on, as opposed to something that's heavily conditioned indoor, indoor not complete that we're, we're asking for continuation anyway.
Yeah.
So with that, is there a motion for a continuation?
I'll make a motion to make a tentative decision based on the new floor calculations, minor change in the decks and change in the...
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So that passes and we are?
November 21st, would that be it, Thursday? Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, if I might, I know these folks are waiting to do their presentation, but I, as you'll see, I've also filed a withdrawal for the, your last hearing.
Yeah.
And so if you have any questions, I can tell you that my clients, as it turned out, some of their neighbors were concerned about what they were doing and had some questions, that in combination with the fact that my, my client is, is currently undergoing medical care and is gonna be hospitalized soon, Mrs. Lucino asked that at this time we withdraw so that they can deal with their current situation and, and go talk to the neighbors and make sure the neighbors are happy, so I did ask for a withdrawal, so I, again, I'm not gonna be here when you vote on that, but I did wanna give you a understanding of why.
Great, well, we appreciate that, move, move the request for motion to withdraw and once we read it in. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Earl T. Yvonne, 10 Sixth Street, applicant, applicant requesting a special permit finding for relief of section 97-4D-5C-01, increase in square footage and 02 upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit leave has may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws.
Wait, sorry, so, back up a second. We made a motion to contend, to continue to the 21st here at 7:30, so just to be accurate, it's here at 7:30, time, place and... Chrissy, Chrissy will get it in there, but I wanna just make sure that we, it's super clear, yep, so it'll be started at the top. Sorry about that.
No worries. Earl T. Yvonne, 10 Sixth Street, doc case requesting a special permit finding for relief of section 97-4D-5C-01, increase in square footage and 02 upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit leave has may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow that the proposed used project order can raid the existing dwelling on the lot and the construction of new single-family dwelling on pilings on a property located at 10 Sixth Street, Palm Island, Newbury, Mat 01951, assessor's card 202 lot 222, continuing from September 19th.
Alrighty, move the application.
Good evening, Matt Steinell from Millennium Engineering, I'm here tonight with Yvonne Alley from Joppa Designs and the applicants Earl, Yvonne and Christina Chiani for their application before the board tonight for a special permit finding. I have a, a copy of the plan up here on a board, I know you probably have copies a little closer to you, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna use this as mine, but if you need it, I can bring it closer too. The site before you tonight is a, an existing single-family home constructed on a full foundation, this has gone to full conservation already and has already received approval, so through that permit process already, the applicants are proposing to tear down the existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home on a pile-supported foundation up in the air. The existing lot is currently nonconforming for frontage and area, in the, in the required zone of 40,000 square feet, they have 11,500 currently and 125 feet of frontage is required and they have 60 feet of frontage. In addition to that, they also have a side yard setback nonconformity where the structure is, it's kind of deceiving, you know, the road's here, this would appear to be a front lot line, but your front, frontage is down here, so this is kind of a side and another side that's a rear to the neighbor because of the odd shape of the lot. So we identified that as a side yard setback, 4.6 currently, where 10 is required, and then what we have proposed before you again is a larger structure on a pile-supported foundation and it is setback a little further on the lot and so the proposed project is in full conformity with all of your zoning requirements with the exception that we're again, we're not changing the size of the lot or the area or the frontage of the lot, so those remain nonconforming and proposed, you can see here before you, the shape of the house is a little non-traditional, it was specifically designed so that way it wasn't just a traditional square home, but it was also designed with the intent of avoiding putting any of the structure within the mapped FEMA flood plane, so that is not just a coincidental shape to it, it is intentional to avoid doing that. Having said that, the flood zone here is elevation 13 and the vast majority of the site where it is located is actually at or above 13, we do have a 13 contour that runs kind of over here on the side, but we're on a kind of high point of the property here, so even though the map flood zone comes up this way, we are actually setting ourselves above it. In addition to that, we're well above it for the purposes of compliance with conservation to get at least two feet off the ground, you see in the corner of the plan, we have a profile set up here with the existing ground, you can see here is 13 for the flood, the mean grade is 13.9, so the average is slightly above flood already, and then the bottom of the structure, the post steel is at 17.4, so we're, we're about four, almost four and a half feet above the flood elevation. The new structure is gonna have a small entryway with a, a front landing and a set of stairs coming into the front and a deck on the, on the right-hand side as you're looking at it from the road, we provided the board with all the, the, about notification green slips and a copy of the legal ads from the newspaper, so the, the proper notification has occurred. I feel like, I, I always feel like I don't, I should never follow Doug, Doug always has a really great presentation and I don't fight go to the extreme with him, but it's, it's a pretty single, it's pretty simple, straightforward, single-family, tear down on, on a very small house that's going to a more modest, we have the, again, Alley, Yvonne is here and can answer questions related to the floor plans and the actual structure, the floor ratio calculation that she's provided, all of the calculations I provided are on the zoning table in the top left-hand corner, and so you can see that we are on the proposed column in full compliance with all of the zoning requirements with the exception again of the lot area frontage. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, are there any questions, comments?
I have a quick one, procedurally, I didn't see the denial letter, was that, do we have that?
So the denial letter was a work in progress at the time of the submission, we'd been asking for it and working with Peter for quite some time and, and we were able to get it at the time that I was bringing the application in and dropping it off, I was exchanging one application and I was getting the letter and so that was part of the, the packet that you should have, but I do have it here, a copy of it here and it should be part of the file.
I'll email that to you right after the meeting.
Okay, and what, just, just so I'm clear, what was the grounds for denial, what, what do we?
So the wording is, it says, "Receive the application for the new home, I am denying your application at this time based on the Newbury zoning code 97-4D-5C-01 and 02 and upward extension and an increase in the building footprint, you may now apply to the Newbury zoning board for relief."
Thank you.
I think it was right around the time that Peter was away on vacation, coming back for a week, going away for another week vacation and there was a struggle to get the letter in time for the submission, so we ran it in and luckily it was kind of like right under the deadlines.
Right. And the only other thing that I think you said up, but I missed it, how many bedrooms in the existing?
So there's an existing three-bedroom home, it's being replaced with a new three-bedroom home, so there's no increase in bedrooms.
Correct. Do we have an existing plan?
Existing floor plans for the home?
I actually have, that's not part of the submission. Yes.
Didn't print these, like, you guys will love looking at people's samples, but that's the structure looks like today.
Right.
If you guys have an idea. I have a lot more photos that were part of the conservation commission package and I think they were uploaded to the link that I sent to town for this as well, but I didn't make an hard paper copy, unfortunately, didn't think ahead.
I can get a copy from Mason and add it to the ZDA file.
And it's in the link I sent you as well.
Thank you.
Chrissy, do you want one of these two?
I do, for some, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Would you like?
Yeah.
Keep that together.
So the assessor's card does have it as 760 square feet and three bedrooms.
So on your site plan, you have an architectural profile view?
Yes.
And it shows that the proposed lowest level of the horizontal support is at 17.4 feet.
That's correct, elevation 17.4.
Yeah, and then I go over to the right and it says base flood elevation, VFP, is elevation 13.
Correct.
And then I go below that and it says existing mean grade elevation is 13.9.
Correct.
So shouldn't the line for 13.9 be higher than the 13?
You're absolutely correct, it's more there for informational purposes than it is to depict which one's above the other, it's just to show that the structure itself is well above flood and you are probably the first person to pick up on that conservation if you even see that.
Okay, so that, that's, that's one, and then as I, I go from there to like A3 elevation, I'm looking at, or let's go A4, I'm looking at the, the grade and you said that the average existing mean grade across the site is 13.9, right? So 13.9 minus first floor elevation, 18.9 is five feet. And so what I'm looking for is a dimension to the mean height of the roof to, to the mean grade. It's dimension to bottom of the lowest structure, but it's not from grade up to mean roof height.
So I propose main roof at 42.4.
Yeah.
And then I have the mean grade at 13, 13.9, and when we subtract the 42.4 from the 13.9, that's where we get the 28 and a half in our zoning matrix table.
Okay, somewhere we need to show the 28 and a half. This is here, proposed one you have. Right, but when I look at this elevation that you have on the lower right and I look at A4, I'm looking at a, am I looking at the roof this way?
I guess.
And so this is the ridge line, this is 47, okay, and that's the mean height then of that roof, which is this roof.
I apologize, the, actually, there's an error in the zoning matrix table, it says 28 and a half, but the dimension on the profile is actually after it, this is the actual, from the mean grade to the, to the roof here is...
Okay, so that...
So it's a difference of, of the way it's interpreted, most towns will ask us to give it to the peak, which is where the 31.1, and the 28 and a half is the distance to the mean, so I guess it's not an error in, in the zoning matrix table, but it is a little bit confusing because we're giving you both.
It's just taking a minute to get, because I'm also looking at the solar panels, I don't see solar panels here and so, I'm just trying to size it up, that's all.
Okay, yeah, not so much an error, I guess it's just confusing, it could have been probably a little clearer. probably a little clearer.
So you said, said forty-two-point-four minus thirteen-point-nine equals the twenty-eight...
No, that's the, that's the, uh, yes, forty-two-point-four is the mean, not the peak, so forty-two-point-four minus the thirteen-point-nine.
Equals twenty-eight-and-a-half, and it says proposed height here is twenty-eight-and-a-half.
Okay.
Alright, so we went through bedrooms, right? We went through height.
Which number on the plan did you say to be corrected?
Actually, neither, I, I thought it was an error, but it's not, it's just a difference in, most towns ask us to give the dimension to the peak, and I was reading that first, so the twenty-eight-and-a-half is accurate from the mean roof.
Yup.
So that's, it's actually accurate.
Twenty-eight-and-a-half, okay.
Yup.
Lot coverage sixteen-point-six, rear setback, nine, ten-point-seven, seventy-point-four is the front. I guess, Chrissy, to note with the odd-shaped lot, that the front setback at seventy-point-four is also twelve-point-six to the front, uh, adjacent lot, right?
Yeah.
You've got two sort of fronts here, um, just the, you know, it's fine, you're within, you're over ten, more than over ten feet.
It would be an interpretation of what a front line would be, because technically the front setback's supposed to be twenty.
Well, it just becomes a side yard, you know, it's, you've got...
Exactly.
Side A, side B, this, this becomes side C.
Side Q.
You've got the eighteen-point-nine listed, you do, you don't have the thirty-six-point-seven listed. The side setback minimum of ten-point-seven, and the, the...
Ten-point-seven being the closest one is here.
Right, so the east side setback is thirty-six-point-seven. Did you note that? Okay, so, we're good. All good, we just, we just note it's twelve-point-six and thirty-six-point-seven.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we've got the yard setback, we talked about the frontage.
Is it a shared driveway at all?
Uh, not officially. Uh, unofficially, the neighbors get along real good with the neighbors, and so they do allow them to park some cars there, but officially, it's not a shared driveway, they have their own frontage with their own access.
Okay, thank you. There's no basement, is there?
Not on the new structure, this is entirely in the area on a pile support, the only thing going to the ground is a utility chase.
I have a note about a basement, I don't know where I...
The existing house does have a basement?
Right.
That's where I read it, okay, so I had a note to check.
Yeah, on the application, I think under existing, it says two-plus basement.
Thank you, that's what I saw. And then, um, just make a side comment to Chrissy, uh, for you guys, but, Chrissy, if we're gonna get eleven by seventeen, then the, the drawings should be, the drawings we receive should be a scale.
Okay.
So, maybe not your forte to, to check, but to ask the applicant when, you know, you spend a lot of time drafting and putting dimensions, and I can't put a scale on it, and eleven-six turns out to six-nine, it's, it just takes a lot of extra time to figure out. So, we'll, we'll figure something else out.
If we need to get you scaled drawings for the record, just so the record's complete, we can get those to you as well.
Are drawings physically attached, or are they scanned these days? Is everything scanned? They're good? So everything's scanned?
Same to you PDF.
That's the problem, is that most often, printers will print to fit, and it messes with everything, right?
Okay, the, the larger-sized drawings are usually typically always the scale, but it's, when we get a smaller pack, we try to figure it out. Um, and if it's well-dimensioned, that makes it a lot easier, but, um, sorry, sorry, you know, comment there. Okay, so, any other comments? Is there anybody in the audience that's in favor? You can all stand up, state your name, and say that you're in favor for the record.
Really fine in favor.
Christina Chiani in favor.
Alright.
Yvonne Alley in favor.
Great.
You're here, you made it, you're part of the presentation, and it's still duly recorded. Um, okay, is there anybody in the audience that's proposed?
I abstained, no.
We won't count that. Um, is there anything on the application, anybody saw that needed correction or anything? And, um, Chrissy, you will slide us a digital copy and an email, and the, with the usual letter, so that we have a complete application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, is there any other discussion?
I'll say here.
Okay, so we'll close the public meeting, and I'll request a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the application to raise the existing dwelling and the construction of a new single-family dwelling, uh, on pilings, uh, with an increase in FAR from twelve percent to twenty-one percent, and a height increase from twenty-point-four to twenty-eight-point-five.
And, I would like to add, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and I would like to add that we will, we will draft a motion, we will get the, the full motion, we will read through it, make sure there are no edits, and we will vote on the complete motion, pause.
On November twenty-first?
Yup, and it, I would say for what we're doing, this looks pretty straightforward. Okay, just to give you the confidence that that's where we're going. Um, so with the draft of the motion added, Mario's motion, is there a second I might add?
I'll second the agenda of the November motion.
Great, excellent. Is there a voter? Aye, a favor, aye. So, three, three dance votes passes.
Thank you.
That's... So we voted on the motion, we're gonna draft the motion, we'll have one more vote, as I said, it seems, just a matter of just making sure it's added, and it's in English, which Chrissy always does an excellent job, and so, we will get to that.
Thank you.
Because there was hopefully nothing, I'm gonna not hopefully put any words in the board's mouth, but I don't think you need to pay to have me there. So at the next meeting, if you even want to attend, you don't need me.
And you can move it to the front.
I will.
We can move through it quickly.
Yup, I'll do that.
Not that I might come out.
Alright, great, everybody's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you, do you have this?
No, I didn't have it. I just made it, I'll make it out of the cloud.
Okay, so why don't you just scan that as well, and you can go aside. We have one, we, yeah, that one.
Yeah, it was, yeah, withdrawal. Uh, Public Hearing, Dave Picknew, uh, David and Carrie Babluciana, One William Early Way, the applicants are requesting a special permit finding for relief of section ninety-seven ten D two C, detached accessory apartments of the Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws, to allow the proposed project, in order to construct a detached poolhouse under the accessory unit, on the second floors, we use as an accessory apartment of a property located at One William Early Way, Newbury, Mass. zero-one-nine-five-one, accessory map, FAR twenty-seven, lot sixty-four D, and the applicant has submitted a withdrawal of the application, no prejudice.
Alright, any questions? None? Is there a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application with no prejudice.
Seconding?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, withdrawn. Alright, is there a motion, is anything else, Chrissy? We will, there's been a fair amount of communication on Cricket Lane, um, it's not that it's negative, it's just there's been good communication, and so we asked Walter Erickson to come in, couldn't make it tonight, he should be in the meeting, next meeting. Um, that couple can go first, Walter could go second, and we can do the others. Uh, we don't need a whole full blow-by-blow, we just need Walter to report this, what we're doing, and if you're getting emails, you're reading what's going on, Martha's very much in tune with what's going on, so, we just need to stay in touch of what's, what's up. There was an incident, I think we all got the emails, about the trucks driving over someone's grass, and the next day, we were out there, and they fixed the grass, and seeded the grass, and the lady that called in to complain was very happy.
She was thrilled.
The telephone pole that was put there at the driveway just barely missed the waterline. They dug up the waterline, the waterline looks like it was hatched at some point with some kind of sleeve, so they're looking to make some adjustments of the waterline connection, so they're not connecting into a patch, but connecting into the line, and Walter will tell us that and everything else. And, if you haven't been out there, I haven't been out there lately, but I was planning this weekend to do a drive-by, I'm sure it looks very different than it did before, with no prejudice.
I've added all the map lot information into the permit length system for the building permits, and I've entered, uh, the building permits for units one through four so far, so, Walter's been supplying us with all the information we need.
And he, he's, he's following everything that everybody's asked him about, and all the prerequisites that we had are being checked out. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent, we're gonna close.